You ready?
You still got one minute yet. Mine says 5:30.
Good afternoon. Welcome to the Planning and Zoning Commission Regular Meeting of Monday, June 22, 2020. Start off with number one, roll call.
Terry Trampi. Can you unmute, Terry?
This is Kenny. Can you hear me?
Got you, Kenny.
Okay, all right.
Terry?
Terry, you have to unmute.
He's still on, right?
Terry?
I was unmuted too, and I had to find out if Star 6 could get out of it.
Star 6.
Yeah, you can reply in the chat window, okay?
Yep, if you're on your phone, you have to hit Star 6.
If you're on your phone, you'll have to hit Star 6, Terry. Let's let him keep working on it.
Okay. Kenny Jones, here it goes.
Oh, hi there. I'm here. I finally found the right button.
Terry, awesome, Kenny. Mark Ross?
Here.
Lisa Jefferson?
Here.
Kevin Neath?
Here.
Mark Powers?
Here.
Gerald Chaney?
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum. Item number two, approval of the agenda. Any changes back there?
The only... I will move this to Kenny.
A second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Agenda is approved. We have approval of the May 18, 2020, regular meeting minutes.
This is Lisa. I'll move to approve.
This is Kenny. I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carried. Item four, business. Consider resolution for recommendation of City Council to approve a Village Center Planned Unit Development request submitted by City of Hiawatha for the property legally described as amended plat of survey 2321, parcels A and B, Hiawatha, Iowa.
If I might, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to talk about the proposal from the City of Hiawatha as a proponent.
Sure.
Since we wrote the petition. And then we also have online Susan Fornash from Hall &amp; Hall, who will also speak to it. But before starting, a couple of housekeeping issues. Number one, because of the coronavirus, if you want to talk, we'll have to do it like we're in class. So you'll have to raise your hand and project because we're going to ask you to speak from where you're at. If that will be okay. And the other thing is a reminder that you should all sign in in the back, and there is some...
Individual pens and hand hand markers as well?
That you can use back there. All right? With that, we'll get started with the presentation. This is called the Village Center Planned Unit Development, assuming that all of you here had gotten notice in the mail that you were within a certain distance. This planned unit development is actually an outgrowth of something that the City of Hiawatha has been working on for over 10 years. And it started with the Oak Brook Mobile Home Park purchase and clearing that land along with some public improvements that we have already accomplished, including the extension of A Avenue and then a connection of A Avenue to Robbins Road. This property is located between the Robbins Road overlay district and includes the Centerpoint Road downtown development area that was also rezoned recently in the City of Hiawatha. This land incorporates or sits in the middle of what we would say is high-density residential and some single-family dwellings that are also right next to this development. The proposal or the goal of this planned unit development is to develop that land that the city has purchased and cleared along with the creation or the start of a creation of a downtown. It is intended to include some high-density residential along with business uses that you would find in a downtown area, usually focused around retail and entertainment. So that's the goals of this planned unit development, and the city owns the property and is going to and is proposing to combine all of the present zones that this incorporates, which is a little bit of multifamily. There's some R7 incorporated into this area. There's some Centerpoint Road 1 and Centerpoint 2, Centerpoint Road 2 zones also incorporated in this particular area. And what we're intending to do is consider it all one zone as a planned unit development, which means we have to make slight modifications to each one of the zones in particular so that the development will fit and be cohesive with the surrounding areas. So with that in mind, some of the basic differences that we're proposing would be that in the original CPR 2 districts, multifamily was not an allowable use, whereas in this case, we have a small area of CPR 2 where we may want to end up with residential, completely residential buildings rather than mixed use. The mixed-use structure, we intend to have more than four rental units, which is presently what it would be required in a CPR 2 zone. We're going to control the exterior of the buildings. Presently, the exterior of the buildings are only controlled in the CPR 1 and 2 zones. To that extent, we are extending that control into the multifamily units that might be located in the R7. There will be a few where we're proposing some setback modifications that will hopefully make this land more developable and look more like a downtown. The big difference is that the buildings would be forward and parking would be behind the buildings rather than in front of them. There will be an exception to allow taller buildings in the CPR 1 zone that's presently allowed. And the entire area will be served by a combined storm sewer system. So rather than each individual lot having to provide their own detention, we can do this in a planned unit development with one basin and a combined system. The development details, the way it stands right now, our proposal is that we would start with building multifamily residential units on the areas beside A Avenue. And then Phase 3 and 4 would be the mixed-use buildings, which would be located right along Robbins Road and Centerpoint Road. And then Phase 5 would be a completion of some residential properties, which would also be along the east side of the property, located west or, excuse me, yes, located east of the apartments, which are currently located north of this property. So the city owns land that hooks around behind that property, and eventually there could be another building built back there. That would be Phase 5. The parameters for the planned unit development are laid out in items A through L. And basically, it covers what I just talked about in terms of what types of buildings there will be, the mandates for stormwater drainage, the requirements for green space and the required parking, all to comply with the City of Hiawatha specifications and standards.
Question?
Yes, I think as far as anyone is concerned, the documents of approval include, just to wait Kevin out, the documents of approval that the commission is looking at today is basically the description, the five-page description of the planned unit development along with the zoning map change, which basically will change the underlying zone to comply with the new planned unit development overlay. There is one correction I would like to bring up in the description that I think you need to be aware of. We found a typo on page one, which, page one paragraph, under Planned Unit Development Overview, the number of rental units or the number of dwelling units, I should say, for the first two buildings, we intended to say would be between 60 and 80 dwellings. What it says is 60 and 80 dwellings per building, and we want to scratch the per building. That should be gone. With that, if there are questions, I think, Mr. Chairman, would be the time. And then if Susan, if the questions don't come to me, we'll have Susan address those from Hall &amp; Hall.
Okay. Questions from the audience?
My question is, you're doing all this development, and we do have a flooding problem down there by Northwood Drive. What are you doing to address that with all this building going on? You have two problems in that area. There's a sewer system that has not been addressed by the city, number one. You're doing new development, and I keep hearing from the city that the problem is Hiawatha, Cedar Rapids, not Hiawatha. However, we live in Hiawatha, not Cedar Rapids. Two is, they keep on doing developments, but I don't see anybody addressing the issue of the flooding. And the flooding seems to get worse every year. I addressed an issue a year ago when you redid the road on 143 Northwood Drive. You redid the road, and when you redid the road, they leveled it so you get more water flow on this side. And the excuse I got, well, Cedar Rapids did it. We didn't, so we really don't care.
Could, not, I just need your name and your address so we can have that on record.
I want to get in trouble.
Yes, I do.
Stan Williams, and then on 143 Northwood Drive.
Did you get that to me? All right, very good. Well, Stan, thank you for your comments. The city engineer is here. I don't know if he's familiar with that area. I could speak to it. It is outside of our overlay district, so it's not really a part of this hearing, but... John?
Yes, I'm John. I'm the engineer. The Northwood is upstream of Dry Creek, where this is going to be built. It's actually downstream.
Downstream.
Anything that they build and that's part of the discussion in the documents they have to do, stormwater detention, underground storage or whatever, you know, that we require now, they're circling. The area you're talking about, I assume, is adjacent to Northwood and the drainage comes down under Northwood and is run down by the bridge.
Right.
Which is, that's been developed for many, many years, or sort of like any year. No storm sewer in that area. It is on the council's radar. We know that if we're going to have more development along Robbins Road, that that will be part of that development. And in the study we did, Robbins Road, that was identified, and the council's aware of it, that we can't really do much else along Robbins, because that does end up in the area that you're talking about. This one is actually downstream beyond the area, but I'm not sure, you know, we overlaid the road a couple of years ago because it was very cracked up and in bad shape, and we put a new surface on it. I don't know that we changed the drainage flow that I know of.
Well, I haven't looked into it, so my opinion is it changed.
Okay.
And if you were to go out there looking before and after, you would have known it's changed. But again, nobody really pays attention to that area. Sure, the city council's planning it in the future. Who knows how long that is? And the thing is, I know we're here building these apartments upstream. That doesn't address what's going to happen when the water comes down. And you got all this new water flowing out in this area? Is that going to impact that area?
Again, this...
Well, there...
As we go through this process, there is floodplains down there in this area, Dry Creek floodplain that they have to.
Yep, I was just going to add to that.
You know, all the extremes that they have to to stay out of the floodplain.
Yep.
And again, their stormwater will be detained, so I don't see that this development with the requirements we have today will make the situation any worse. It won't make it any better, but it won't make it any worse than I can see. But, you know, we're happy to discuss the Northview area with you anytime.
Yeah.
Upstream of this one.
Very good. Thank you, John. Thank you, Stan.
Ma'am?
My name is Karen Matthews, and I'm with 406 The Maron Drive, and I'm with the condo association for Forest Heights Condos. And our property, and I have to reference the map I got in the mail, so it's, I'm more focused on phase 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, so I was trying to keep up with y'all.
Sure.
So Phase 5 is, comes closest to the property at the Forest Heights Condom. And in Phase 5, if I follow correctly, that whole section will be residential? Is that correct?
It is. We are, in our planned unit development, we are saying that that will be high-density or medium-density residential. I believe in the chart, we are actually, we have attached dwelling units also would be allowed in that zone. That's Phase 5, which is not quite as dense as a large apartment building.
Okay, so medium to high.
Medium to high.
And no more than the combined in the multi-family buildings?
That is an approximate number.
Sure, that's fine.
The way it looks now, it will be more than that because presently we have a proposal that would give us almost 80 units with the first two buildings.
Okay.
So we will exceed the 80.
Okay. How many buildings do you think might go into that area?
We currently are estimating two to three buildings of residential. That is Phase 1, 2, and 5.
Okay, so spread out.
Yes.
Okay. And then in the Phase 5, the creek obviously runs through there.
That's correct.
Do you plan to build on both sides of it?
No. In fact, I believe if I looked at this map correctly, the only place outside of the flood zone is on the west side of the creek. The east side is entirely in the flood zone.
Gotcha.
Okay?
Thank you.
Absolutely. Yes.
My name is Jeanne Schibler. I live at 109 Oak Street. And the Oak Brook development is my backyard. I am one of three houses that are retained right there. The previous two developers that were projected to be built in that area had approached to be about the surges in that property. Just wondering what the intentions are at this point for those three properties that are right in the middle of that.
Absolutely. Currently, this only addresses it, addresses your property in terms of screening and making sure we're good neighbors with the single-family residential lots that continue to exist. It will be entirely up to the potential developer at his discretion to make offers and to purchase those properties. At the present time, the city is not in a position to negotiate nor to make offers for additional properties for this development, although I would say they are critically positioned for this area.
Do you have a name of the developer?
I do not know the answer whether or not that's public yet or not. That is not public yet. And this does not, this isn't really for them. This is for the City of Hiawatha so that we can go looking for a developer. Very good. Thank you. Ted? What's your name? Name and address.
Name and address? My address down there is 101 13.
Thank you.
My question is, in that whole development for the trailer park, you should be, how many housing units are going to be there total? You said 80 units per building?
Uh, no, I said that's the mistake. That's the mistake. It's, right now, we were planning 80 to 60 in Phase 1 and Phase 2. That would be, that would be, well, let's put it this way. We're not sure because the mixed-use buildings will vary greatly, but for the back where the Oak Brook used to be, we're looking at 60 to 80 for Phase 2 and then what might fit in Phase 5, depending on whether they go high-density or medium-density. So we're really only looking right now at two buildings in the actual Oak Brook site.
Will they be rental properties, condos?
We are not making a stipulation on the dwelling units at this point. There was stipulations when it was a Centerpoint Road development that it would be more condo development rather than, or condo arrangements rather than rental arrangements. But at this time, we're more interested in the rooftops and rather than regulating whether they're owned or rented, it's, isn't really the way we want to control these units. More or less, we are looking at the type of construction and the look of the project. So, and we have some, we have some renditions of the types of buildings we're looking for, which include, in our documentation, we're looking for buildings that have a certain amount of masonry, a certain amount of glass. We actually have a rendition or two that might represent, but these actually follow the criteria that we're putting into the planned unit development so that we're not, they're not going to be plain vinyl siding building, essentially.
Can I have one of these different pictures?
I sure will. And I will allow you to get those eventually or come and look at them. Do we have any of these online yet? I don't think we do.
I don't know. Did you put them within your packet?
My biggest concern...
Yeah, I don't think we put any of the renditions in the packet.
My biggest concern would be about the people that you could be putting into that area that live there. And all the things I've seen in my life when I'm around there, these multidevelopments like that, where you're shoving these big apartment buildings in, they wind up down the road, like the Johnson Development over here behind, off of Blair's Red Room. You know, at that point, the...
Well, I'm not, I'm not familiar with what you're, what you're talking about, but that's okay.
I'm talking about when you start stuffing a bunch of big apartment buildings in and the problems it creates.
Sure.
And law enforcement and just generally everything.
Well, well, Ted, thank you. You're, we do have, and it was in your packet, we do have a layout of the potential building locations and sizes as they relate to the area, along with the parking that goes along with it. And Susan can probably speak a little bit more to the density that we might be creating in the area.
Yeah, when this first came about, I heard that there was going to be housing down there for the elderly. There are some care facilities and stuff like that.
And we're not precluding that. I mean, it...
Stuff like that, um, calls, uh...
Heartburn.
...I mean, law enforcement problems, problems in general.
Well, we, there are things we can control and things we can't, Ted. But thank you. We are controlling, basically, we're controlling the building heights, locations, and exteriors. And these will be, to what we're trying to do, they will be market rate units, so... Does that answer your questions? I know I probably won't answer all your concerns. Okay.
I just, I can never understand why the city got in the limelight.
Okay, well, we're trying to...
Make that back to best of my books.
Yes.
You're referencing the packet, and I know you said you didn't include the pictures at this point, but is that package online for the...
Yes. Yes. It is all online, and you can find that on the Planning and Zoning page. Just one more thing, Mr. Chairman, if I might. Susan, is there anything that I missed in the presentation?
I don't think so. I think the intent would be to start with, like you said, Phase 1 would be block 3, Building 3, which is sort of in the middle of that, of the development. That's where Phase 1 would start. And that, that building would have approximately 39 units, three stories.
Very good. Thank you.
And I believe you said, this is market rate housing, so it's not, there's, and they would be rentals.
Okay. Thank you.
Ma'am?
Time frame by phase, approximate?
Approximate phases, what we have in our, in our proposal, we are planning to see the start of Phase 1 this summer. That's a plan. That's as far as we've gotten.
Pat?
Yes?
I couldn't see it quite well on my phone. Is there a storm sewer run down that new street now?
Uh, yes, it is, it is completed with utilities.
And where does that go? You know, John?
The storm sewers?
The storm sewer?
It's in the new, it in company, it's in Dry Creek.
It is?
It goes to Dry Creek.
It's got an outlet? Outfall is Dry Creek, correct?
Okay.
I, dude, I found the tentative, the tentative timeframe goes clear out to 2025 for Phase 5, but these are all estimates.
Terry, has Pat for another question, Pat?
Go ahead, Terry.
On page 2 of your three or four-page thing, paragraph 4 downwards to bottom, there's a, what's next bullet points? Can you tell me what the intent of those bullet points are? Because the specific one that I have a question about is that, you know, the next last one that says buildings exceeding three stories and 45 feet in height. Seems that when we started this, we were going to limit it to three-story buildings because that was the maximum capability of the current firefighting ability of the fire department.
Sure, I can speak to that, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Those bullet points, basically, Terry, are the differences that we're asking for from the PUD that vary away from the particular zone that they might be located in. I don't know what the original intent for the CPR 1 building height limit was. It may have been for firefighting. But what we're intending to, and it would be less than three stories. What we're intending to do is allow all the buildings in this PUD to be the same height, which will be four feet, four, four stories and 55 feet would be what we're intending. And the reason for those bullets, bullet points is basically to point out what the significant changes will be as you approve. significant changes will be as you approve this zoning change.
Okay, has the fire department addressed this change?
Yes, I believe we have a memo from the fire department approving the planned unit development.
So does it require a new fire truck?
No, I don't think, I don't believe it'd require a new fire truck. The other thing is, these buildings would all be sprinkled.
100%.
So any fires that would start should be controlled by the sprinkler system. And the fire department would still need to respond to put it out, but, and the type of construction they're talking about, with the brick and mortar, they should be able to withstand what they consider to be, you know, interior fires.
So the, the answer to your question is no.
Okay. Thank you, Wes. That's, that's all.
Mr. Chairman, Mark Ross here. I have a question, and I didn't see read through the information. Are there any auxiliary parking garages or spaces under these facilities, or is all surface parking? Not that it makes a difference, I was just curious.
By the renditions, I believe it's all surface parking.
The current renditions show all surface parking, but that doesn't preclude that they, they could build underground parking.
Yes, I just, I just think it's, it's a very popular amenity in West Des Moines and Minneapolis and Madison, that folks want underground parking, you know, at least some of it, and you don't have the unsightly, you know, outside parking, I mean, garages, you know, of Holden, so I was curious, thank you.
Yep, understood. Thank you, Mark.
Any other questions from commission members?
Mr. Chairman, I do not have any, it does not appear that there are any questions from anybody online as well.
Okay, nothing, nothing submitted. Well, to the commission members, what's your desire going forward?
Well, this is Darryl. I think we should recommend that the, that we support this resolution to the city council regarding the planned unit development request. And I would salute that.
Okay, we have a motion?
I'll second, Terry.
Terry seconds. Any other discussion? Roll call?
Darryl Chaney?
Aye.
Kevin Neath?
Aye.
Lisa Gibson?
Aye.
Kenny Jones?
Aye.
Terry Trimpie?
Aye.
Mark Ross?
Aye.
Mark Powers?
Aye. Motion carried. Looking for a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
This is Kevy Elsada.
Have a motion, a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carried. Thank you, folks.
Thank you. Thank you. Don't forget to sign in, or out in this case. It's, it's right outside the door there. Thank you.
So here's the main minutes. And we'll make sure I have this in the order. Awesome, I was hoping everybody showed up. That's the resolution for tonight.
Oh, okay.
Hey.
I got it. Yeah.
All the way in, the water goes over.
I have to drift around because there's too much lashing on the ferry.